It is July 8th, 2014, and it is 7:00 PM. And the town of Auburn Planning Board meeting is called to order. And would everybody please stand and salute the flag? Right now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The meeting is being televised and recorded for future playing. Is there anybody in the audience that's recording the meeting? Alright, so 7 o'clock. The first thing we have is a discussion. Pakicigayak here at 141 Auburn Street for a minor amendment to remove left turn prohibition.
Good evening, everyone.
Please introduce yourself and explain what you're looking for.
Yeah, I'm Joe Mark, Pakicigayak here. At the last meeting here, I was informed that I needed to be notified to ask about removing the no-left-turn sign from the site plan.
Oh, right turn only. Was it going to be right?
It was a right turn only. Right turn only.
Yeah.
Yep. Now, we really have to have things for Thursday before in order to look at them. And if we wanted to see the site, we'd have to get there in time to see it. We don't want to get them in the night of the meeting. So that's why we postponed this part of the program for tonight. Okay. Any questions, Jonathan?
Well, I think we've discussed this at length. I think the board was pretty much at a place last week where it seems as if we're all on agreement. They would need to come back for the procedural issue. If nobody else has any comments, I'll gladly offer a motion.
Wendy?
As I said, after reviewing the initial information that was provided and the input from the police chief, I think that we should remove that stipulation of right turn only. It's in the field.
Ronnie?
Joe, would, if you were to be granted this, would you be willing to put a sign prior to exiting such as exercise caution or use caution exiting? Something like that?
Yes.
On like each the left and right side of the driveway?
Absolutely.
We can put that in as a condition, Adam? Something similar? Something like that. Use caution, exit caution, use caution.
The big problem that's fetched right there is people speeding and talking on cellphones. I stood on Auburn Street there with my accountant, oh, two years ago. And I had him count the number of cars that went by us. And I counted the number of people on cellphone. Out of the 100 cars that he counted, 39 of them were talking on their cellphones and speeding.
And you were one of them?
Yeah. I have hands free, you can't tell me.
That's been my concern, as I said. I was hit there, and I had my car destroyed. And they had, the fire department had to come and get me out of the car because I couldn't get out. And that was my concern with that area. If there's a way to control the speeding, but if there's a way to, I don't know how you're going to keep people off their cellphones.
No, but I'd be more than happy to let you have a police pack in that parking lot anytime they want.
Yeah, maybe we can get them to put another speed limit sign on the street. And again, if you put on each the left and right side of that exit driveway, on both sides, use caution exiting or something like that.
The other thing is I can petition whomever and ask them to put a slow children's sign on our road.
That's, that's.
What's that in there, Adam? Who would call a school zone?
I believe that it was, I don't think it qualifies for a school zone because that's only, I know that you're, are you a school or a daycare?
I am, I am a school. And, uh, but it still, but it still wouldn't be considered a school zone, but it could be the caution children.
Yeah, I think that they can.
They have one for that use.
We can hook you up with O'Quayle, and I think he would be the one. So if, you know, if the board wanted to further that as part of this, you could condition that he speak with the EPW about placement of that sub- sign.
Okay, well, the motion's been made and seconded.
To make a motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I think if you are going to have the discussion, you shut off for the rest of the day.
Anyone else want to speak from the audience?
No, I think, um, we're in support of the AR's concerns, or the exact same concerns, after getting a letter from the police chief and down in the air. If we go agree as far as the safety officials.
Would you introduce yourself?
Sean Reed, 11 Highland Street.
Okay.
I think, um, he'd be really happy to.
Okay, anyone else have anything to say? Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded.
You did?
Was the motion made?
So process-wise, do I first need to make a motion declaring just a minor amendment?
Yeah, because the last motion was only for the change in the width of driveway.
So in case they make a, and so the width, the width of the driveway has already been changed?
Correct.
So the only thing that.
Has to be changed is the.
Is the removal of the left turn prohibition.
And the installation of some sign.
Well, that would be a condition.
Condition on that. Okay. In that case, I would make a motion to declare the removal of the no right, or right turn only sign a minor amendment.
And I'll second that.
Okay. It's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Prove to vote.
Now you have to make a motion too.
Right. So then I would also make a motion to remove the right turn only sign from the site plan with the condition that we add two caution signs near the exit.
And try to get a slow sign on the slow road too.
Right.
Slow children's.
Yeah, children.
And that we direct, or we ask the applicant to contact the EPW director to, I spoke children's sign to Auburn Street.
I'll second that.
Okay, any comments, questions? Audience have any comments or questions? Joe, is that alright with you?
That's fine.
Alright, the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Nobody's opposed? It's oppose.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before the second I'm a part, I have to, um, to the chair, I need to disclose that I am related to one of the individuals who complained about the Brinmore Estates subdivision, that I have no, um, planning to be back to, um, any decision that the planning board makes.
Okay, you're fine.
Have you spoken with your authority?
I have tried to spoken with my authority.
Alright.
Yes, and I concur.
Okay, so Brinmore Estates is coming up. Can we have a letter?
Well, you have, uh, on your space this evening, there's an email from, uh, Mark Donahue, who is the attorney for Mr. Gallo.
Yeah.
There was a scheduling conflict they were not even to attend this evening.
Alright.
Clearly, you can still discuss the subdivision. You can still hear the residents' concerns. What Mr. Donahue has pledged to do is to submit in writing to the board an update on the subdivision status, what the remainder of 2014 will look like in the subdivision, what work is expected to get done. And I will pass along any concerns, excuse me, that come up this evening in reference to the planning board's jurisdiction to him, and he'll address those within the report. And then if there are concerns that are outside the planning board's jurisdiction, we'll look at, at who's responsible for those and work on getting that sent to them.
Alright, so what we're going to do is we'll, we'll have a discussion, and anyone that wants to speak can speak, and you can, uh.
Adam, why don't you tell, maybe Adam should tell us some of the things that we'll.
Sure.
Give us some background.
Alright, so. This subdivision was approved in 1968, and portions of it were constructed. Lower Briar Cliff, I think it's Wentworth is the other street over there, and a small portion of Regis. In 2004-ish, a developer by the name of Tom Ravain, I don't know if he purchased it or when it became a car, it's, he came to own it in some way. He constructed the remaining portion of Regis and the homes along that portion. He constructed also the portion of Briar Cliff from the intersection with Regis to kind of the crest of the hill as it starts to curve around. I don't know if any of you folks have gone up there. Uh, I think there's maybe six or eight houses that were constructed as part of that subdivision. In the meantime, he also cleared the top of what at one point was the hill. And he ran into some significant erosion problems and had some significant issues with the town and the federal over this clearing. In 2000, I want to say 10, Gallo Construction, I think that their Fox Run Builders is the name that they use, purchased the subdivision from Mr. Ravain and set about stabilizing and installing the remainder of the road and utilities and detention and looking to build homes. I believe that they ended up with somewhere between 32 and 40 lots. And I think right now there's maybe 10 houses up there?
26 lots, 13 houses.
Okay, there's 13 built. And so what has happened is they have had some issues with some of the residents. This came to light maybe three weeks ago. There's a house on the, I'm trying to get, well, if you pull into Amherst, it's on the right. It's the first house on the right in Amherst. There's a significant slope in the backyard. We had had some significant rain, and there was some erosion and stormwater runoff that was affecting the homeowner. They contacted the EPW who looked at it and agreed that there was some issue. They contacted me, I contacted Mr. Gallo. They took action on a lot that they were constructing at 27 Briar Cliff, which then created a conflict between Mr. Gallo and the homeowner at 25 Briar Cliff in reference to the grade and the way that the lots address each other and the construction of what is holding the grade back. That brought me up there to look at this issue. There are some additional issues with unstabilized open areas that per the EPA general permit that they pulled when they began construction are supposed to be stabilized within 14 days of disturbance, have contributed to the original complaint that I was aware of on Amherst because the slope is unstabilized. And if it were stabilized, it probably wouldn't have stopped the water. I think it would have reduced the velocity of vegetation. It would have eliminated the silt runoff into the area. And I think that if that had been done, there probably wouldn't be a conflict at 25. In the conversation that I had with Mr. Gallo about 27, I spoke with Stephen Gallo, who is the president of Gallo Builders. His father, Bob Gallo, I'm not sure what his title is, but he is father, lord and master of the company, I'm not sure. He kind of overrules everybody. And when the complaint came in, he went out on site, made some field changes and spot decisions, and by Mr. Gal, Mr. Stephen Gallo's own admission, altered the drainage pattern on the lot at 27, which is not necessarily an uncommon thing in home construction, but in reference to the subdivision, there are identified subcatchments. He's altered the percentage of the lot that goes from one subcatchment to the other. It was split about 70/30. I think it's probably about 90/10 at this point. So there may be some issues in the future. No one has complained about that, but it's something that this board would have to look at as we go to potentially close out the subdivision in however long it takes them to finalize it and the acceptance of the road. So I think in that regard, there's some things that we can look at. The construction of the slope is sort of just outside of the planning board's jurisdiction based on what's included in the subdivision plans, but it's something that can certainly be looked at. There, there's a height issue at the rear of the lot. There isn't a discernible height. It's probably somewhere between 36 and 60 inches, probably more in the 48 range. At that point, you're looking at fall protection within the building code and, you know, construction methods and things like that. So that would be the building inspector's purview. I see many more residents than I have spoken to up there, so I imagine that there's additional concerns that exist. I'm not sure if some of them are just here in support or if they actually have additional concerns that haven't been relayed to the town.
Didn't we have trouble with, before Gallo took it over, didn't we have trouble with sewage on one of those roads up here?
Filled up the.
Well, there was an issue with the way that the manholes were installed, and one of the manholes, part of it caved in and backed up the sewer into one of the homes. That road was and is currently still owned by Mr. Ravain, so that was not something the town was necessarily responsible for. My understanding is the work was done without benefit of inspection, so again, Mr. Ravain did things that we were not able to verify.
Well, what we'll do is we'll listen to the residents, and would you please come up and sit down and give us your name so we can put it in the record? Every, any question that you have, we'll present it to their attorney. And as I said, what we want to do is have your name for the record, and some of the people on TV can see who you are.
And residential trust, please.
Sure. My name's Kevin O'Brien, and I live at 25 Briar Cliff Drive in Tulsa. We're happily raising our fourth generation of Auburn residents there. We're here tonight because we feel that we need help from the town. This started, as I think we stated, that there was a problem on Amherst Drive, but it turns out it's related to the problem on Briar Cliff Drive. I think what you hear from everyone tonight is that it all seems to be interconnected. I, uh, I think I initially reached out to Adam because riprap was used to separate 25 Briar Cliff and 27 Briar Cliff. And Bliss and I had specifically talked to Gallo Builders about not using riprap. The new residents are closing their house next week. In concert, voice concerned that there was no need to put riprap between their properties, and we really wanted the original plan, which was an even slope between our properties, a grass slope for us, our young children and our neighbors. And we were promised by Gallo Builders that they wouldn't use riprap to divide our properties. The problem on Amherst Drive, which is directly behind us, or it's directly behind 27 Briar Cliff, I think Mr. Burnham had called, the town manager as well, to express that there was a lot of water coming off the back of 27 Briar Cliff. And as you have stated, the Gallows decided that they would solve that problem of 27 draining off to Amherst by building a wall between 25 and 27 Briar Cliff to stop the drainage from happening.
How many, how many houses or lots are affected by this?
Uh, I've, I've been out around the neighborhood talking to people, and it seems like, I had counted 11 properties, but it's probably more. At least half have water issues.
The same problem?
And, um, you know, I think my wife and everyone have talked to us, encouraged me to step back and look at the problem, not just from my property, but from all of our properties. And in doing so, I, I found a picture from right before we moved in, on top here of us taking a shot of Amherst Drive from our house, and a shot from this past. I don't.
That would be helpful.
But what it'll show is in the back of the lot, there's water runoff.
Are these, these little pictures that you have?
Yeah, they're actually videos I took. I tried to take still shots so you could see them, but I'm happy to share the videos if you'd like.
With Adam, sort of, because when they come in, we want to show them what their problem is, you know? He can throw it up on the screen, so when we're discussing it, we all see what the problem is.
Would you like the video now? I can send it over.
Yeah, if you email it over to me.
Do you have public wifi on this side?
Yeah, I have a little password.
I want to ask them, I want to ask them, this is, that's the road comes up and looks like this, and that house is there, that's the other lots there. Look at the hell.
Are they still working under a cease and desist order, Adam?
They're not. I went out there that day, and they began stabilization, and that seemed to be the big concern. The issue with the riprap, I don't think is something that we can cause them to cease for because it would be under the building permit, not under the, the planning board because it's on the lot now within the subdivision.
So that would be the building inspector?
Correct.
Okay, so the building inspector would be concerned with the riprap.
Something to put up there so we can see where they are.
I just emailed you the, the videos.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have access to my email in here.
Okay.
But I can go get the, the print of the subdivision.
Basically, the top photo, you can see in the back of the lot, there was water runoff. In order to solve that problem, we moved in on 27, which is the lot next to us, which is directly in front of the house you see there on Amherst. They built two trenches. They dug two trenches out so the water would run off. About a month ago, they filled those trenches so that they could finish the lot at 27. And I believe that when, uh, Amherst started to have its heaviest runoff.
So what we're concerned about is the riprap that they have here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's probably not the riprap, it's the grading.
You're up on the top, on the height?
Yes. So this is, I believe this is the final house that Mr. Ravain built.
Correct.
And this is where Mr. O'Brien lives.
I'm talking about 25, 27.
Which is, yep.
And this is the Burnham's house on Amherst Drive. So I'm specifically talking about this corner here, and what I'll get to is this corner here, which is, the water's coming from here, and the solutions continue to seem to be wherever the problem is, but, but it seems like an overall excessive water issue was not being dealt with.
Is anyone else in your party that's affected by this?
And certainly.
Why don't you come up and sit down?
Quick for you. Adam, can you get us copies of the subdivision plan as well?
I can. I have them scanned in the, on the server.
Email would be great for me.
I'm not sure how large they are, but it may be a matter of me burning a disc and dropping it on your houses because they're, it'll be a significant file.
This is off the back that came down on DeCamber.
And once again, could you give us your name, please, and address?
Yeah, my name is John Burnham, and my wife and I constantly live at 6 Amherst, which is the home net that we've been referencing. I actually do have some pictures that I could show you as well, and I can email those to Adam. So, I mean, I can pass a couple around if people want to look at just briefly. I guess I would just reaffirm kind of what, what he said. Essentially, we have a slope at the back of our property that's dirt. And we had runoff coming from what would eventually, I guess, be 8 Amherst down the side, and then also from 27 Briar Cliff from the back. They did build a French drain along the back of our property that ran off into what would be 4 Amherst, the property below 25. And that French drain worked very well as far as channeling water to where it was supposed to go. However, the problem was that we had asked a number of times over the last year and a half to be addressed, is the water was coming off so hard and the land was dirt. It was creating massive erosion on the hills, and I, I don't use that word too lightly. It was pretty, I mean, there were some major trenches that had developed. Gallo has made a couple of what I would consider feeble attempts at fixing it. They, I guess part, if I take one quick step back, well, the original reason that we had reached out to the town was they had created these multiple drainage pits that ended up essentially being standing ponds. And they were fairly deep. I would guess they probably at times three to four feet deep. And you can tell that because the drain pipes are angled at such a way that you can see how deep the water can actually get before it gets into the drain.
Actually, I took some panoramic shots.
We call it Lake Amherst.
So I was.
It has geese and frogs.
We have frogs. No joke, we have frogs living in this now.
So on, on 6, they've created.
No, at, at 8.
Oh, I'm sorry, 8, yes, you live at 6.
And also at 29 and 31 as well.
Yep, up here. This one they just created?
Correct.
And they have one over, I'm sorry, over here as well.
Correct.
There's one on 3.
Yeah, correct.
3 Amhersts. And there's one on 19 as well.
So these are just pools of standing water?
They're just pools of standing water.
What's the surface, the square footage of the surface? Big as a table?
This one, the one in this picture, this is before an Amherst.
As big as a table?
A much bigger. Some of the smaller ones might be the size.
These pictures are shots from the corner of 29.
And the one I'm looking at is a solid cliff.
And the house that you see is.
And it, it doesn't drain.
6 Amhersts.
So, so we had originally reached out just about the standing water, some concerns around mosquitoes. It was actually ironically, it was Gallo that said you need to reach out to the town because we don't deal with that. So that led to, I guess, discovering that the root cause of these standing water ponds were, which is essentially the erosion. As I said, he, at one point, he had backfilled our slope with looms. And they had put some plastic flex drainage pipe that went from the corner of 25 and 27 down to 4, but that didn't work either. The water was just going around the pipe and again, creating these massive channels. You know, at this point, it, it isn't draining into our backyard now down the hill, at least not so far, but it's still just oyster. I'm guessing over time it will continue. And it's going in their yard, yeah.
It's now going into our yard. So the drainage has been diverted, and despite their best efforts at being reactionary to the issues, they've now created a new problem where we're getting drainage into our yard. And with the riprap, one of our prior, our, our primary concerns is we're getting all the silt in our yard, so.
Which we were getting as well.
So you're saying those are 4, 5, 6 feet deep possibly?
The ponds? I wouldn't say 4, 5, 6, but 4.
Enough for a kid to get.
Oh, absolutely. No doubt.
I mean, when we do detention ponds, we condition them with fences and everything else.
No fences.
No fences at all. I think I saw one with a fence at one point on 3.
They had three quarter, but they've had three-quarter fences, so as, as parents of small children, it's a serious concern. It's not enclosed. You need to keep small children off of the property because it's a serious hazard.
I guess the other thing, I would just affirm what was said earlier. I think, you know, we're, we're downhill from a slope, and I, I think we expect that there would be some water runoff when it rains. Had, had Gallo addressed the.
It's not supposed to direct any water onto your property.
Well, it, it also, that's true, but in the creation of the subdivision, there's going to be a drainage pattern. Yes, agreed. And it's a matter of reducing velocity and if you, and this plan will sort of illustrate what I was talking about before. I don't think Mr. O'Brien was there when I brought this out and met with Mr. Gallo, but when the property was originally developed, they identified what the subcatchment areas were pre-development and then what they would be post-development. And if you look in this general area, this line is the sheet flow. Oh, I'm sorry, that's, yeah, that, yeah. So, so you have subcatchment 1, which is everything this way, including this. You have subcatchment 5.
You have subcatchment 5, which is different than this. So all of the water is supposed to be flowing this way. With the regrading of 27, he's now directing the water from 27 back this way. He's directing it into a design system. In theory, it could very well handle it, but we don't know that. And so that's one of the things that I discussed with his attorney today is, if you're going to do that, that's fine, but we may need some calculations to prove that the pipe size is adequate, that you have adequate catch basin coverage, that kind of stuff. Especially where the flow is directional.
Can I just present this to you? Because this, during that same water storm that created those three-foot swills, this picture here is the back corner of 27 and 25. So they were trying to stop all that water flow that was accumulating at 29 and 8 from hitting 6 Amherst. And it's now coming into our yard and 25. And I know it has to go somewhere, but certainly not going out into the street.
Adam, is there any detention ponds on the upper level?
There are some temporary ponds. There's one detention pond for the entire development.
Down at the bottom?
Correct, down at, right by where Mr. Costas' hands are.
The water can't get through, those pipes are clogged.
And that's another issue that we have with them.
It actually shoots water out of the manhole.
I wish I said depth, but that's one of the better...
So what's your name? Depth isn't very visible, but it's a pretty deep erosion.
And the only way the water on top is going is by evaporation. Because it's all clay, that whole hill is clay.
And everything they use, they claim as loam, is silt. So when they do a yard, they put silt down, they don't put loam.
I'm sorry, I missed your last name.
And I would also respectfully add that you mentioned that the catch basin, the catch basin system, it's not adequate. They, every catch basin up on that hill has sandbags around it because it's not designed to handle any of the flow, either temporarily or permanently. The runoff that comes down that hill in any significant waterfall is a strong thing. And I'm sure we have video from significant rainstorms, but they replace the sandbags three times a year to accommodate the water that's coming off that hill. So I don't know how it could possibly handle, I'm not an engineer, I don't, I don't do any of this, I don't know what you guys do know. But how it could accommodate additional water flow is just, would be surprising to me when it's not handling the typical, with all of the drainage ponds and the interim solutions they've set up.
What I'll say is, the sandbags are there to keep the silt out of the system. The system is probably full of silt and probably needs to be cleaned. The original design was submitted and proven to be adequate at full development for the street and the water that would come off of that street without the introduction of excessive silt. And, and, you know, I haven't been out there in heavy rain, but you may be correct. It's currently, it's not handling the water the way that it should based on a failure within the system when it was, if it was installed the way it was supposed to be. And if I'm not mistaken, our DPW director did view the installation because he and Mr. Gallo went back and forth about some of the road construction issues, replacing the subgrade and making sure it was an adequate subgrade. So I agree that there's probably some silt in there, there probably needs to be some cleaning done. And the sandbags are to try and keep some of the silt out. I don't think that they've probably done as much as they should have.
Are these solid manhole covers?
No, no, I think she's speaking about the grates.
The catch bay where the, where the water goes in.
Correct.
The material up there is a incredibly fine silt. It stays in solution for a long time. So even if the sandbags, and they call them the silt sacks, those orange things that they put in, even if those are catching anything that's running as a solid, there's still a significant amount of potential fines within the water that could be settling within the pipe. So I think that that's something we can certainly have Mr. Gallo look at in some way.
So it's just from rain runoff just in through everything?
Anyone else that this is affecting?
I don't know if you guys want to speak to it. Look, I had your pictures. These two properties here, 36 and 38, both are having water runoff their back corners and taking out land. This is a picture of 36, the back corner of 36, and the soil erosion. 38, I think, did you guys have soil erosion in the back of the house?
Yeah, so, my name's Jim Stolberg, I live on 3 New Briar Cliff, so across the street. Could you spell your last name? It's Stolberg, S-T-O-L-B-E-R-G. Thank you. And I think like everybody else with the home that we built up on the hill, our hill is like, it's in the back. And during the construction process, it was looster as their house remains. And so as a result, there was, you know, it's certainly not a straight line, there's some erosion. Since then, things have taken root in this hill. Whether it be grass or weeds or whatnot, and so that's sort of subsided. And I think that's the difference between our hill and their house. Their hills are dealing with their silt. And so my perspective on all of this is that I do think that a lot of these issues are the result of just being an active construction site. You know, I think for them to be rectified, the silt, one way or another, needs to be settled in the grass and the sewer, whatever engineers do to reduce those things. So, and the reason I'm here today is actually that I sort of heard that there was going to be a cease and desist suddenly went down with the building. And I guess I'd just like to add caution to that and that whatever steps this board is going to take to ensure that Mr. Gallo is building properly, ideally, I think it would be best if it worked around the cease and desist. Because I think, you know, an active construction site is not an ideal place to live. All of us are envious, you know, complete neighborhood. So an inactive construction site, I think, is more than a bad experience.
I would just add to affirm what he just said, you know, so on our slope, to his point, they did make an attempt, they hydroseeded it, but it literally just, I mean, at the bottom of the hill, along the wall, we got six feet of grass growing. You know, and I think that's what I was kind of trying to say earlier is I think we just wanted them to do something to fix the hill instead of wooden erode.
Yeah, in grasses.
How long have you lived there now?
We've been there about a year and a half. We moved in in January of 2013.
Okay, and how long do they have to...
You're allowed to have an open site for 14 days without, before it's stabilized.
Okay, and it's been a year and a half?
I mean, it's been on and off. They've made several feeble attempts to get it corrected, but not many.
Have they regraded that hill since they put that soldier pile wall in at the bottom?
Say that again?
The rock wall, the soldier pile? At the back of your, so your house, you've got those giant boulders?
Yeah.
It's called a soldier pile?
Oh, okay, yeah, sorry.
That's all right, it's not an engineered wall, it's a series of rocks that they, they put together. That slope, has it always been that same general pitch?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, it had gotten really bad where it concaved in because of the erosion and they have added a bunch more silo or whatever it is. But I think it's been essentially the same grade.
How big can they build those walls without approval?
Any wall over four feet requires a building permit.
That's, that was over four feet, the one beside my house is fifteen feet.
And I would have to look at the records to identify whether or not they were granted, if they applied for and were granted a building permit. And that's something I can certainly look into.
How would that affect us if we purchased the property and they didn't get a permit? And we purchased the property with that yard space?
It's not something I can answer right now, because it falls under the building inspector's purview. My, my initial thought would be that since they did the construction, it would fall on them as responsibility, but I don't know that for certain. And, you know, to be quite honest, we're certainly not going to come after you for inheriting something that's a problem. And it's something that we'll work with you on.
I just want to add, I concur that none of us want to be in a perpetual construction site. We want to see the subdivision finished. And we want to see Gallo be successful, and we all have everything we need by that. One of the biggest frustrations we have is that when we've approached the Gallows with our concerns, we have basically gotten no response and said, this is it, you have to deal with it, you have no choice. Until we, until any of us have gone to town officials and voiced our complaints, that's the only time we get a reaction from them. I'm sure this is an uncommon, I'm sure you guys hear this all the time. Again, this is, this seems to be a perpetual water issue that hasn't gone away, that they seem to, when either the town manager or the inspector or the planning board gets involved, they slap a band-aid on it, they do whatever they think is the right solution, they see if it's going to stick, and if it doesn't stick, they continue to make amends. And I appreciate what the Gallows have done, I truly do, because I have found them to be very upstanding construction providers. They're very responsive to most of our complaints. However, when this all happened, we got no response until we raised concerns with you all. And then there was an immediate response to that. Subsequent to them doing this, we've had significant erosion of the silt, of the riprap. They came in today and put down a bunch of piles of dirt to try to... So they keep trying to, they keep building a wall. And at some point, we have to stop building walls to try and fix this problem. And I don't know anything about grading, I don't know anything about construction, I am way in over my head here. But at some point, we have to stop digging ditches and hope that's going to be the fix. And we have to stop throwing dirt out there and hope that's, that's going to stop the fix. Myself personally, I have an issue because we have a four-and-a-half-foot wall that didn't exist, that's full of moose rock. And we will take that up with the Gallows, we are working diligently to try to solve that with them. And until you all got involved, Steve and Gallo had no interest in talking to us about that. But that is a serious concern for us with small children. Our new neighbors have a serious concern with small children, there are lots of small children in the neighborhood. But it's a bigger water issue that has been there for a long time. And we're just hoping that there is, there is something that can be found either in the plans or some resolution, that we can all come to an amicable solution so that nobody is losing their yards, having erosion, and we can still continue to build up the neighborhood.
So in response to the issue that you were having with the back slope, they came in and futzed around with the lot up above it?
Essentially.
Essentially, okay.
I mean, they made some other attempts, but that was their ultimate. They changed the grating, you know.
And that has created now an issue on your property?
Which, which is first picture from two years ago, that was the same issue, it just keeps moving around.
Around.
If you look at that photo there, the first wall, the riprap wall, is our property. But if you look beyond that, that's where I was taking the pictures of the buildings that have been created. And they're just trying to build that wall up so that it can...
Do you mind if I hold on to this?
We can email them to you.
I just emailed you the ideas.
Okay, I want to put the hard copy in the file. And I will share them with the Gallows, thank you.
Initially, it's going to be a slope, and then slope from one end leads to grass, and then they come in and dump it.
Anything else that you want us to bring up?
Well, I think part of what I wanted to get at tonight was just to understand, you know, we all dealt with the Gallows. And we all deal with the Gallows on a regular basis. And I think we all individually feel slightly hopeless. It's only been recently that I've discovered that we can approach it and talk to it and make some triangulation here between us and the Gallows and understanding who is responsible for what in the town would be helpful to us, that we know who to talk to and we're not just complaining all the time. And I don't think any of us are here to complain, we're here to find a resolution.
Well, that's what he's here for, that's what we're here for. You know, act as a buffer between you and the general contractor. For all your concerns, we will send them so that they know what they are when they come in here and want to address them.
And I'm just, through the chair, just to, sort of, what I'm hearing from, in general, the neighborhood is, the issue, the issues are unstabilized areas, random detention basins without any sight of them draining and any sort of prevention of access. And an overall concern for the ability of the development to handle stormwater and what a comprehensive solution to that stormwater is going to be. So there's really just, there's three major issues that are, that's at the macro level. And then as you drill down, all of the micro concerns sort of bubble back up to those three majors. And am I in the ballpark? And I know that each of you have some other potentially building issues. You can come up to the second floor. Mondays we're open till seven, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday we're here till four, and Friday we're only here till one. You can contact the building inspector, you can contact me, I can put you in touch with him. Maybe if you have concerns, can schedule an appointment to sit down or have him come out and view your potential concerns. He is responsive and he'll come out and look and give you his opinion on what can potentially be done. I'll look at whether or not the permits will hold on those, you know, the walls in your backyard and the one over adjacent to your home. And we'll see, you know, what the result of that is. I'm going to have to check with the building inspector on whether or not that large one qualifies as a wall or whether it's riprap on a slope. And there may be other additional things that they'll have to look at because the building code is very clear on what qualifies as what. But we'll resolve that issue. Mr. Chairman, Adam, I guess, my question is similar to Kevin's, which is, who is responsible for what and what's in our purview here? Similarly, see a couple of major issues, the stormwater, both temporary and permanent.
And that's within the board's purview.
Okay, which obviously you'd be looking at immediately.
And that's been the majority of my conversations with the Gallows attorney.
And while, you know, I appreciate the concern about the cease and desist order, my other concern is that the house gets built and the issues continue and there's no motivation to correct things in the future. Other question I think is...
I just put out there too, that 27 is going to close next week and 29 is on deposit in this week, so it is pretty big.
Right.
Well, they'll need to get a final, sort of, get a document, see if you have a building inspector on 27. We, our previous building inspector has recently taken another job, so we have an intern building inspector who, I think, you know, he and I drove through today and we identified, you know, the riprap area and he said that he had some additional concerns that he wanted to look at. So he's aware of it and it's something that he'll be looking at.
So that goes to my second concern, which is this riprap wall, which is consistent throughout the neighborhood. They've been doing that in numerous locations. It seems as if residents were surprised by that and upset with that. Is that something that's consistent with the subdivision plan? And is that something that is, something that we can act on as a board?
First time, before that, it was soldier walls.
Soldier pile, soldier pile, so that's...
Because it's in a few locations.
All it does is prevent the banking from going down, but everything else is still going to run through it if it's coming from someplace else.
And it's, it's not consistent or inconsistent with the subdivision plan because when the plan was approved in 2004, they didn't require individual lot grading on the subdivision plan. So, and I did the dance with Mr. Gallo over this on whether or not it was something that the board... His position is, well, you never know how you're going to have to... His position is, well, you never know how you're going to have to grade the lot based on the house that you're going to build. My position was, yes, but you have a general drainage pattern and doing what you're doing may alter it. No, it's not, yes, it is. So it's something that, you know, the building inspector, I think going forward, our current building inspector is a proponent of site plans and final grading plans. I don't know that the previous inspector always required that. So that's something that 29, they haven't submitted a building permit for that I'm aware of. And that's something that they would be looking to require as that goes forward. I know that doesn't help you with 27, but the fact that the building inspector is aware of it, there may be some general bylaws that cover the bringing in of fill or rock or any of that stuff that would be the purview of the code enforcement officer, that he may be able to address them through.
So for, I guess, their purposes, they should be following up with the building inspector on the riprap issue and the stormwater issues with us.
Correct.
My only final question, in being up there, I think a lot of the stormwater issues have led to some serious degradation of the road surfaces, especially on the hill up Briar Cliff. And my major concern with that is just running into another old cart road type situation where the road gets degraded over the course of time, it never gets to a final state, and the town is then left to bring it up to the point at which the lots have been sold and the developers moved on. So if that's something else that we can kind of add to the list of things here, and I would like to have a sense of what are his responsibilities to bring that up to a final condition?
The road right now is only a binder.
Right.
The, from this point where 23, 20, I should look over here, 34, I'm sorry, 23 and 34, down to Regis on Briar Cliff, is not Mr. Gallo's road. So there's already issues with that because that's Mr. Ravain's road. And if I'm not mistaken, Mr., we have money that will probably cover a significant portion of the reconstruction.
So this already is an old cart?
Correct. And it's been so for a long time. The, we have not addressed it based on the fact that there's all of these homes to be built fixing this road.
I appreciate that.
And the remainder of Briar Cliff from Regis to Brynmar is in also less than ideal shape. And I think that the intent is, upon completion of the upper portion, the remainder of Briar Cliff would be reconstructed in some manner.
Can we make them look sidewalks all the way around? Because otherwise sidewalk will stop, both through the Ravain portion and the start of beginning the Gallows.
If I'm not mistaken, he didn't ask for relief from sidewalks and he has it on. I'm looking at those plans, it looks like one side.
So for the kids that have one side of the sidewalk going all the way down to the bus stop, is that what you're saying?
That's the way that the board approved it. Now...
Because they don't have, they don't exist. They don't exist if the kid's walking the street.
Correct, it's 34 down. Now, again, what generally happens, the sidewalk is one of the last things that the developer constructs because once it's installed.
So if that wasn't constructed to the way it was shown on the plan here, and the road was never brought up to the condition it was, do we have any recourse against Mr. Ravain?
I mean, we...
And then how do we prevent this from happening with Mr. Gallo?
A previous board has made action to seize his bond, which is, I believe, eighty-some odd thousand dollars in cash. But then it's up to the DPW director to decide to pave that road during a major construction operation.
I can understand not doing it now, but I just want to say, the only action that we have is to seize the bond.
Correct. Because Mr. Ravain has cried for it at this point.
Can we review the bond that is on Mr. Gallo's and make sure that it's substantial enough to complete the project, so the town's not held completing more subdivisions for developers?
You, as the board, have the ability to, by your own motion, make any modification to the subdivision you choose through a public hearing process, all of that kind of good stuff. What I'll caution the board is, you're certainly well within your rights to have the bond reviewed, look for an updated number for the cost, because it has been several years, costs are different. Making any substantial changes to the physical layout, while you can do it, may result in legal action that can be along in...
My concern is more so that we just consistently run into this road. In fact, the other example of it is on the street.
Yeah, on the other, yeah.
Where the town is left finishing subdivisions. And considering the current condition of the roadway and considering the fact that a substantial portion of the roadway that connects to the property is already in that condition, I just, I, we should look at ensuring that we don't continue the mistakes of the past and allowing that to continue.
I think that's reasonable.
If I can just wrap up my thought on the one issue. When I, when I was asked to take a step back and look at what the problem is, who gets the water? And that the Gallo keeps storing water higher and higher and higher up the hill. Eventually, there's going to be a lot left stored and it's going to run off. And the catch basin is probably...
Creating those ponds without a permit is an issue.
But eventually, if they keep going up the lots, they keep pushing it up. The only place for it to go is down the roadways, sounds like a cost for purification.
This is the way the Gallows build, if you look at their history. They just sued Worcester over the one they're going down in Quincy Village. Because they went right through there, unbelievable, banking, buying houses, and the city tried to stop them.
You're talking about arboretum?
Yeah, and the city tried to stop them. And Gallows coming aboard, and they won. So they're going to keep going down, they have two hundred more homes to go. Go to the Milbury subdivision, same thing. This is what they do. And they'll run on, keep going to go.
I have a question on...
I'm sorry, your name is?
Robert, my name's Toby, C-O-T-E. My question was here, 23 and 34, I'm at 24, plus 44, and are they going to come here with the whole street? Or are they going to do like a half a street there?
Where is that, down next to your lot?
This is my lot.
Yep.
This is 23, they say 21 and 23 have not been bonded, I'm not sure what that is. But there's a hill here, it's a big, which, I mean, they do have kids in the neighborhood, like you were saying, and they don't have any fencing around that hill. So if the dirt was to fall and the kids were buried in the dirt, you know what I'm saying? That's just a certain...
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that thing...
The pile of fill at the end.
What they do is they take it, and they're taking it from the front to the back. So then some of it's just sheer wall, so if you dig this way, you know, kids are in place. So that's just, you know, one of my concerns there. And then the other one was if they come with a street, I was wondering if they came with a street or if they're going to come with a street. Because what will happen here, which is my question, well, I have the same problems with the water when they build these two and they pitch it towards my house, you know?
It should be a street, and the street is designed...
Because he said that what he was going to do is go half of this so they could do a house this way. This would be the driver right here, the half come in. That's what, I was under the impression.
I, we'll have to have a conversation with them about that.
I just figured I'd ask.
Because the whole frontage needs to be constructed to legally have frontage. And the streets are designed to carry the water to the catch basins, which are designed to convey it to the underground pipes, which are designed to bring it back to the immense detention basin back behind Lot 13.
But that's the top of the hill, so that's where the water comes from. There's a water tank behind it.
Correct, yep.
There's a water tank behind there, so they could have a house pitched this way. So my concern was, if it's pitched this way, will you have the same problems?
If the lot's pitched toward the street, the street will have curbs. It'll be a six inch, two inch curve. It should, it should be a whole street. And the street should pitch back towards this way. And it should carry, you know, this slopes down this way and this slopes down this way. So in theory, the water would hit the crown of this road and either split or follow one of the gutter lines and intercept into, and there's a catch basin here. I believe there's a couple here.
Because I have like, I dug it myself, the water was sort of back, you know, like this, so it goes back towards the back of the house, so it's not coming this way towards the front. And then you have, like I said, the other concern was just the hill, that's simple. They have the orange...
Yeah, just put some, some...
It just makes me nervous. I mean, my kids, their grandfather yelled at them already once and that was it. They've never run over there. I just don't know if other kids would walk there. The other question I had was, now, were they, with the town, were they supposed to put trees or anything like that?
I'd have to dig into the plans. I don't know if there's trees in there and have to pull it apart. And that'll generally be the last thing that they do and it'll be...
I'm just asking because I wasn't sure how they're going to do the curves.
Well, it would be on the back, it would be on the backside of the curb. Generally, I think at the time that this was approved, they were requiring trees between the sidewalk and the curb. So there'll be a two and a half, three foot landscape strip on the front side of the sidewalk near the curb. And the tree would be in there on the side of the street where there isn't landscape.
He's already putting sidewalks.
The sidewalk's already...
He's already poured sidewalks.
So then that high angle is right up to where the sidewalk is. I mean, I have a little, I think I got...
Yeah, there's a sidewalk that's been obstructed between 36 and 34. But not between 34 and 35.
My kids want it up.
This is it.
There are trees on the plan.
Whole top of the hill was treated and they took them all out.
Actually, I think Mr. Ravain took those out.
No, no, the Gallows took them.
Oh, did they?
I watched them do it.
Just recently.
Yeah, just recently. Probably in the last six months.
That was in 29 and 35.
Okay, so it looks like the trees on the backside of the sidewalk. So you don't actually own to the sidewalk. There's a space that's probably in the realm of three to five feet that's included in what's known as the roadway layout. So the roadway layout is fifty feet wide from edge to edge, and that runs from property line to property line. Contained within that is a grass strip, the curb, the traveled way, which is the paved area, another curb, a sidewalk, and then another small grass strip. So if you want to look at this, you can, it's not really the best illustration, but... You're over here, this is actually Amherst. But, so this little flecky area is the sidewalk. This area here is the, is the grass strip. And then the dark heavy line is the lot plate. So while the town generally isn't going to maintain this little bit of grass, it technically owns it if there were to be an expansion and the road needed to be widened. I'd have to look at the decision.
Well, no, I just have to say...
We generally don't look for them to put in those kind of trees because they're a bear for the town to maintain. Because they, what they tend to do is they pitch the sidewalk, they cause all sorts of long-term trouble, especially with bump round utilities. So we generally look at like flowering trees of some sort. Yeah, because they generally grow to about twenty feet tall. They generally aren't much wider of a canopy than, you know, fifteen or so feet. Whereas you get into some of those maples, they get a hundred feet tall and the canopy is just more trouble than we can, we can keep up with.
Can I just ask what the next action the board is? Or do you take our concerns and do you leave private, sort of, public?
Probably send them to their attorney. They'll type up their concerns and then their attorney, they're going to come back and he's going to answer his concerns we've had previous. And we'll also send them your concerns so they can address them.
Yeah, I think that what I'll do is I'll send...
We'll still have them come in.
Yeah, I'm going to send their attorney a letter outlining what the general concerns are. It sounds like the board wants a report on the general stormwater situation going on up there, how they plan to address it going forward, and what the general impact of some of the grade changes they've made are. And they'll be required to provide that. I know that their attorney has offered to meet me on site with Mr. Gallo, identify some of those major issues. I can take two board members because, or, I mean, we could post a meeting and the whole board could go. That's something the board would have to discuss amongst themselves. And then they'll theoretically be, per their letter, submitting a response. I think that based on some of these concerns, two weeks may be aggressive in getting that response. What we might be able to get is some of the immediate concerns, ways to address some of the silt, putting up some of the safety fence stuff. The long-term stormwater stuff, I think, might take a little bit longer with some engineering. Excuse me, so that's something I think that the board will have to maybe look at when they get a response from Mr. Gallo. And something I can certainly discuss with him and his attorney and see what they are looking at as far as a reasonable turnaround time.
Do we have opportunity to request that engineering reviews what's going on up there?
Sure.
Do I have to make a motion about that?
You'd like the town engineer to look at it?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Is there any regulation on how much fill you can take in one ton?
From one to another, no, but there is. Some towns have requirements on how much fill you can bring into specific sites. Often, if you're moving that fill around a single site, it doesn't really...
I always thought because over on Route 20, when they built that bank or by the shuttle station, the building got a lot of trouble with taking all the top grade and bringing it to Worcester or Milbury or something. Because it took it out of town.
You mean the clay? Yeah, the clay. They used the clay on the...
I lived down that street.
Yeah, so, and I know he got a lot of trouble for that, he got fined for it. I watched Gallo do five hundred trucks of stuff off on that hill.
That may have been an EPA fine? That was before me, so I don't know.
That was twenty-five years ago, thirty years ago.
That's how he's doing the Milbury site. He took all the material from Auburn and brought it to Milbury. He's backfilling this crappy area, he's going to sell people homes going fill in Milbury.
But he did bring that from Worcester, the big hill of Byron Town.
Like, does the board want to meet with Adam, a couple people meet with Adam and Mr. Gallo?
I don't think we can, because it confuses one or two.
No, I'm not, I'm talking about the...
I'm able to do it.
He puts that underneath, that's why you can dig down in the...
At the property, I think, I'd...
So I'll contact you too with when I set up an appointment and...
Can I just add one thing? We've kind of already discussed it, but just to talk again a little bit about the road conditions and the erosion that's actually happening there, because we have talked a little bit more about soil. But some of the areas around the sewers, especially, you know, that one up on Briar Cliff, they literally have like five cones shoved in it because there's so much of the road that's eroded around that. But that's, I'm just wondering if there's any kind of recourse in the meantime. I mean, it's going to be years before the subdivisions are lifted. And the conditions of the road are getting worse and worse. And again, more specific, I mean, the driving portion's bad enough, but more specifically on the edges of the sewers where it's all eroding around there and causing like literally holes that I'd be afraid to keep it falling into. And the other thing that that affects is in the winter, you know, everybody's thinking, well, winter right now, that the plumbing situation is horrible with all the raised sewers and maple covers and they throw cones and sandbags and barrels and all sorts of things. And I mean, it's hard to even get up and down. It's bad enough because it's a hill, but when it's not sort of plowed sufficiently due to kind of all the other stuff that's going on with the urban emissions, just kind of turning it right up. You know, it's kind of a planning board issue.
No, that's, that's...
Twenty-eight of the two of you have to go.
That's very much a planning board issue. Because they have authority over the entire roadway, the entire drainage system. So I think if they're going to have the town engineer look at it, that's certainly something as the DPW director, he'll also want to address because his guys are probably going to be the ones out there plowing it. because his guys are probably going to be the ones out there plowing it. Uh, it's no good for them to hit the catch basins because it dings the plow and potentially takes it out of commission, but it also wrecks the catch basin and then there's all the other issues. So, you know, with, with the pace that Mr. Gallo's going, I don't think there's any reason he can't adjust the structures so they're flush. And then when he goes to do the final grade, readjust them, it's a matter of opening the area, taking a course of bricks off and resetting them. I know, um, builders don't generally like to do that because there's a cost involved. Uh, but I imagine that over time, the cost of getting flipped consistently is, is going to add up too.
I, I don't know what it's called. Along those lines, I know in the bar, there's some sort of water pipe, for lack of a better word, that's got this small round cap that just literally sits there and gets knocked out all the time because of the, their car falls in it.
That one doesn't even pet.
That's a, that's a part of the mailbox.
Yeah, right in front of my mailbox.
So when the mail goes.
Is that what it is? What is it?
It's some sort of metal, it's the, it's the cast iron cap that you put over the water shut off.
Oh, okay.
And the cap is literally the wrong one for the one part of the house. I looked at it. I thought I was stealing it from the pop and put it in his. Gallo probably sued the best lawyer.
All right, well, is there anything else?
Just a point of clarification. When you refer to Mr. Gallo, are you referring to Steven?
I generally have dealt with Steven.
Well, the father's the only one that can get it done. Well, Gallo gets things done. Steven does not.
I, I'm, I, I can't say that for sure, one way or the other. Uh, my dealings with Steven have been, for the most part, positive. He's responded. Um, you know, this issue is, I think, a lot larger than most of what I've had to contact him about. Uh, and I think that having his attorney involved will certainly have some additional impact, hopefully.
If there's nothing else, closed hearing and.
That's just a discussion.
Just a discussion, yeah.
Want to be sure we have all the points.
Yep.
Because the water thing seems to be.
I mean, that's the heart of the majority of the issues.
Yeah, it's a, um, a cat and mouse game. Fix one, cause an issue with another.
Well, and I think that's why the board needs a comprehensive, uh, evaluation. Review from, and I guess.
You think about it though, right? He's, like she said, he's fixing one problem but he's causing another. So on behind their house, he puts a French drain onto the lot next door. When seven persons buys that lot, they have a French drain coming on to their lot. What's he going to do? Put the French drain to the next lot? It, it doesn't make any sense the way he does this.
And I, I think that that's sort of why we want to look at a comprehensive, long-term plan on, on how he's going to address it. Uh, you know, I think that the point about the town engineer, I, I, kind of going back and forth in my head, clearly he should look at it.
How tight are you?
Well, no, that, that, that would work as well. I mean, that's something that, you know, then we have to fight with him about who pays for it. Uh, you know, we can look at that if, if that's what the board wants. I guess I'm, what I'm going back and forth about is, do we have the town engineer look at it and say, you have to do this, or have Mr. Gallo propose a comprehensive plan, which we then have reviewed and we have the town engineer look at the things like the catch basins, the road surface, the stuff that's physical and onsite right now that we can direct him to address and then rather than have the town engineer saying.
Maybe Gallo will come up with a plan.
Correct, because what my, and, you know, and.
But if he comes up with a plan and, and then it's approved, then someone's going to hold his feet.
Correct.
Well, look what we went through with Ravain. Two years plus, you still have it.
Well, and I think that that's something that the board can, can certainly start to look at. Uh, what I guess, my general hesitation about the town identifying, you, this is what the issue is, you have to do this to fix it, is if for some reason he does that and it doesn't work, then what's the culpability for the town and the board? Whereas if Mr. Gallo puts together a plan through his engineer that he hires, the town engineer looks at it and says, I see this issue, I see this issue. Uh, you, you get two engineers sort of having a conversation about what the, the matter is rather than us saying, you do this. And, and I think in general, on something that's as, as massive as this, I think that's the tact that I would, would lean towards, um, just because it's his project, it's his, he estimate the proposal and if he can justify what his theories and means are through whatever plan he comes up with and the town engineer can look at it, do the calculations and replicate his results, then we can say, all right, he proposes, we reviewed it and it appeared to be correct. And it's more of us looking at his plan and saying it's okay as opposed to saying, you need to do this thing and, and trying to either convince him to do it or, or argue with him that it's the right way.
Right.
So I'll talk to the town engineer about the conditions of the road and the drainage structures and that kind of stuff. I'll talk to Mr. Gallo and his attorney about a, a long-term comprehensive plan and, uh, we'll see what their report comes up with. Uh, anybody who has concerns about building issues, uh, you can call me. Uh, I gave Mr. O'Brien my card. Uh, the building inspector is in my office, so if you want to call that number and ask to speak to the building inspector, you can do that. Uh, you, he's in and out, so you may not speak to him the first time you call. Leave him a message. He will certainly get back to you. If for whatever reason you're more comfortable emailing, feel free to email me. I will forward it along to him. I will, or I'll respond to you and I'll CC him. Uh, and that way you all have a, a trail in conversation.
Now, is the building inspector full-time?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so the building inspector is full-time.
Thank you, board, very much for hearing us out. Steven very much led me to believe, and I think we talked to my other neighbors, whatever it was, to believe that I was a person that had a problem. And having an audience here and getting a chance to speak with my neighbors actually makes me feel a little better. You know, we get a lot of crazies and so.
Well, what we want to see is the project completed and done right.
So thank you.
Good luck.
Stay aggressive. Okay. So, we're going to have a meeting with Gallo on.
I'll speak with him. He's said he would respond for the twenty seconds.
Sure, give me the building inspector's.
Looking at the size and scope of the concerns, I question whether or not he'd be able to give us a full comprehensive report by the twenty second, but I, I think that the best thing is to put it on the agenda. I can report back. We can see what the conversation led to. Uh, my hope would be that sometime between now and then, uh, we can meet him on site and see what, what shakes out there and, and sort of take it one meeting at a time.
Okay.
My only concern is the impending closings that he has. So once he sells those properties, what ability does he have to go on and modify things on top of them? Is that an issue?
Potentially.
See.
And.
Is that anything that?
We, no, not that I.
Cease and desist.
The cease and desist would cover what the board has purview over. Uh, I, I think that it would lead to legal action on the closing because he has lot releases for the lots. So he has the legal ability to convey. Uh, and, you know, it might tie us up in court and prevent him from closing immediately, but it.
Do you have a certificate of ownership?
I don't believe that he does as of yet on twenty seven.
Is that something they could be?
I, I think it's going to depend on what the building inspector sees and whether or not he feels that he meets the requirements for the CO. Uh, you know, the other, if the potential buyer for twenty seven has concerns, uh, I, I think that quite honestly, the almighty dollar speaks much louder than the ability to get a CO. If they're unhappy with this riprap and refuse closing based on that, it would be, you know, that I think would speak a, a much, much more to, to the status, you know. And clearly, we can't direct them to do that. That's something that they'd have to do with their own volition. Uh, but I, I, again, I don't believe he has a CO and that would be the first, the first hurdle.
Let them look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
You know, in twenty nine, you know, I, I think he's probably months out before he's, probably spring before he's really ready to button that up and close it. So if it's just under agreement, right now it's a temporary detention basis. So, uh, he doesn't even permit to put up a house in, um, and that, he would have industry over that. And, and really the reality is he's going to have to work around whatever lots are already owned and figure a way to make it work on the lots that he's doing.
All right, well, moving on.
So the next meeting will be, we're going to put it on the meeting for the July twenty second?
Correct.
Let's see where we end up.
Five oh two Washington.
Well, why don't we get Paul Jem? We just got to get a report on Washington Street, right?
Correct.
You know, Elwood. Why don't we take Paul?
Thank you.
Okay.
I have to look at that.
I.
I'm not sure.
Making it hotter.
He's like the bomb covers. Will.
The heater.
No, they have fan only. They've got high cool, low cool. I swear to God, that's been blowing hot air.
Oh, we have central air in this building.
Oh, yeah. Good job.
There's no way.
Is it blowing cold air?
I just put it on high, so prepare to be cool.
The central air, the, the compressors outside.
Why didn't you?
Well, we have Mr. Jem here with Whitetail Run Estates Lot Line Discussion.
Actually, ten ninety-eight degree heaters just left the room.
Yeah. Uh, Paul Jem here with Whitetail Run. Um, I would like to make a lot line change between two lots. Uh, we feel it's a very minor insignificant change. It improved both of the lots from a building standpoint, but, uh, I'm asking the board, because they have the authority to waive any and or all subdivision requirements, I'm asking the board to waive the public hearing process because none of the wetlands, none of the open space, none of, the only, nothing has changed as far as meeting the criteria for, uh, the subdivision. It's still minimum thirty thousand square foot lot. It's got thirty-seven thousand square feet, hundred eighty feet of frontage versus a hundred. Um, it's still adequate. The only difference is we're changing the lot line from this, instead of a long and narrow lot and making it a little wider over the front.
Can you put it up there anywhere, Paul, so we can all look at it at the same time? We don't have an easy.
No.
Cause I'm, I'd like to see him.
This is the old lot eight right here. We're not changing any open space, nothing in any other lot. This is, what I was going to, I was going to sell my lot, my house with this lot, okay? But because when you go open space, you can no longer further subdivide, I was going to subdivide this lot after the street was built. But once you go open space, you can no further subdivide any more land inside. So this lot eight was put in, okay, quickly and without.
Lot eight with the dark align.
This is the old line.
That's the old line.
Okay, and we're ma- making it like this.
So how much is that additional land?
It's thirty-seven thousand square feet in this lot.
And what was it before, Paul?
Forty-six.
Wait a minute.
All of the lots are thirty-one, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-two, thirty-seven, somewhere in that.
So when you add that piece that you cut out, the darker black line, right?
That one, yep.
When you add that little triangle off, sort of, you're add, you're making it a forty-seven thousand square foot lot?
No, making a forty-seven thousand.
This was forty-seven thousand.
And making it a thirty, thirty-seven.
Oh, and you're keeping the back.
Correct.
And then we made it, this will go back on the lot.
And I'm putting this on, on here.
It's open space now?
Yes. It's an open space subdivision. It's unconstructed. My understanding is Mr. Jem is looking to sell the subdivision to a developer. And in that process, he's keeping his home and is including lot eight in the sale. So in order to create the lot that he really wants to retain as his home, he would like to alter.
Keep the back cut out, right?
They wouldn't, they wouldn't buy seven lots. It was eight lots or nothing. And I had my eye on a million other things going through the entire process of this because I always had the intention, I would have this whole thing here. And when I came time to sell my house, it would be, I would make whatever changes I need to at the time. However, they want eight lots. And I says, well, if you want eight lots, I want to make a modification. I don't want this house right in my backyard. I'll give you more frontage and wider, get you further away from the wetlands and move it a little bit so that it's behind my garage and I can look out of my backyard and not see a house. Okay? If I get stuck here and can't sell my house, I don't want a house right in my backyard. And the line kind of went diagonally through my backyard. It was kind of weird. I guess I was, like I said, I was concerned with a number of other things, okay, while we were going through this. I had no concern for selling the subdivision until I found out that they want to buy it, but they want eight lots.
So this meets all the size requirements now?
It is.
I don't hear.
I'm all right.
So what are you looking for, Paul?
Um, I'm asking that the town, that the board waived the public hearing process because in our, my opinion, it doesn't affect any of the others. It just affects the two people, which is me, between these. It's, it's already an approved subdivision. All the issues have been answered. It's a minor lot modification, lot line modification.
And nothing's been done.
Nothing's been done.
Nothing's been done yet.
No.
And I would record it as an amended.
Put a shovel on the ground. Is that, oh, all right then. It would get recorded as an amended plan to the subdivision.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's up to the board to choose to waive. Uh, my feeling is if you're altering a subdivision that's unconstructed, you trip into the public hearing requirement in order to do it. Notice advertising, all that fun stuff. The board does have the ability to waive any and all portions of the subdivision rules and regulations. If you feel that this is minor and you wish to allow the waiver of the hearing, you can do that.
All right, well, I have a motion to waive the hearing.
Don't make that motion.
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to waive the public hearing for this minor change. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's, it's all right. Now, you have to.
You have to approve the alteration.
Now, you have to make it a minor.
No, because it's a.
All right.
You have to sign the bylaw.
Okay, my, motion's been made.
I'm just going to pad.
Motion's been made.
I'm sorry.
I'm in motion.
Any conditions? I would recommend that all previous conditions remain.
Oh, okay. Yep, yep.
For the other lot. All right, it's made. Anyone second?
Second. Second, okay. I think we want to skinny, show you what you are.
It's been made, a motion's been made and seconded to approve it. Anyone have any questions or concerns? No? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I can feel the cool air coming out of that already.
You're welcome.
Like you said, ninety-eight, hundred degrees.
You were the AC guy. You were supposed to be on that.
The guy.
Oh my God, I'm sitting back there bouncing.
It's like this all day in here.
Why is no one ever fixed the AC in this building?
Now we have.
You got a hundred fifty grand?
The red.
Thank you very much. I hope this place cools down. I will take another ninety-eight degree body out of here.
I'll have the sign that can be rolled away.
That's what I do.
Better than the ones with the description.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so the next thing we have is five oh two Washington Street.
What's going on five oh two?
Well, Mr. Rothera had some concerns at the last meeting. Uh, I believe Mr. Antenna Vickers did you want to speak to somebody and reinforced.
Five oh two.
Some of them.
Oh, right.
Reinforced the path that they committed to having their large trucks take.
I've been there three times since to get gas. Twice I had to leave. It just was, it, it wasn't worth the nightmare. It was tragic, the whole traffic. It was awful.
The cars or?
No, I, there was no trucks. It was just the cars, just the cars. Going all different ways, coming in, that island there that we did, I had a, I didn't like that in the beginning.
I sat across the street and watched it.
Uh, the, the design of the entrance, I will reiterate, I feel is problematic, but that's the, the way that it was, it was designed and installed.
And you can see why the trucks are having a hard time. If they can't get through, like you said, there's so many cars in there. If they can't come, come in this way and bring the truck around so that it's heading back out, then they're stuck.
If this is room twenty, Adam.
The only way they can get in and around is they come in off South Street, then they can pull out and fill the gas tank, then they can pull out on the twenty.
Is this, this is twenty?
Went by there. It must've been yesterday. And the truck was in there filling the gas and it, it had clearly come in off of twenty.
And it was facing.
It was facing the entrance on South Street.
Yeah, and that's, that's what they're doing. They're going out on the South Street.
I think he would have a hard time making that, that turn.
That's why they go through the restaurant.
They go through the restaurant parking lot.
Yeah, exactly.
They, we asked, and they, I asked about the template in, a couple of times, and they said that.
And we, we have the plan with the template on.
Cause the way it was supposed to be is coming, heading east. Because the way it was supposed to be is coming, heading east on 20, come in there, stay in the front side of the pumps, come in, stop at some angle there, fill up where the tanks are, and then come, I thought, I looked, and I said, "They must have, we must have informed them to come out here. We could have never allowed that there was going to come out here."
Yeah, no, no, it's designed to come back around to the 20 exit.
I mean, it's a cluster there.
They were, it was reinforced, that's the commitment that they made. I did look at the approval, there's no condition on the truck movement. They did submit the plan. You know, I'm, enforcement is, it's one of those things with, how do you, how do you catch every driver and twist their arm into it? We can continue to remind Cumberland Farms, I don't know-
Did we send them a letter?
Uh, no, the building inspector went and sent them.
Okay.
So I mean, I can-
Could we follow that up with a letter?
Sure.
And just, you know, reiterating that it's causing an issue?
And who was the attorney on that?
The neighbor, yeah.
I don't think that they had an attorney. They, they used their internal, they have a site development team internal, and they had a representative from Cumberland Farms, and they had their engineer.
Okay, so let's, let's go on to 88 Elmwood Street, Gibson Road issue.
That is the A&R that you approved a couple of weeks ago, a couple months ago, with Gibson Road with the five homes that I had concern about the construction.
Oh, right, right, right.
Both homes are shut down by the building inspector. The site is shut down by the building inspector, because he was bringing in unscreened loom, full of rocks and organic material, and dumping it on-site in excess of 50 cubic yards and probably in excess of 500 cubic yards.
Down on the lower path.
Well, he was dumping it right in the back of 88 and just shoving it over the hill.
Which one is the one when you look at it? The right-hand back rear corner? It's like the dirt is on, yeah, it's, it's, I think it's fronted on Elmwood.
There's two homes on Elmwood.
Elmwood, yeah.
Well, it's the, the one on Elmwood that's, maybe there's a road that goes down-
The one that's not completed? There's High Ridge on one side, there's Gibson on the other.
That's the one I talked about. When, I thought that there was definitely regulations on building on filled land, how much had to be, how much had to be under the frost wall and stuff. If you look at that right rear corner, you can see, it's just like you put some dirt-
And that's all part of-
And then it tapers right away.
That's all part of the issue that the building inspector identified when he shut him down. They went on-site, five trucks showed up, and they identified that they were coming from the Avalon Apartment Project in Marlborough, and they were literally, I mean, they were dumping rocks and some dirt. There's rocks out there that are, you know, as big as my torso, that-
In back of that house?
Yeah, that they were just pushing over the edge. They, again, they shut them down, they told him that he needs to come up with an engineered plan showing proposed fill, that he needs civil analysis and compaction reports on the fill. The DPW director got on-site and was less than thrilled with the construction that was done on Gibson. He has not applied for water or sewer lines. At that point, I imagine that the DPW director's going to require real improvement plans through this board, so I expect to either see that project completely disappear or be back in front of this board. If you drive by there, I encourage you, if you have the time, to stop a second and go and look at the mess that exists in the rear. I just wanted to make the board aware that if he is going to pursue the special permit for fill, that's going to come in front of the board. There'll be a series of requirements that the building inspector is looking for. That will be some of those spots.
Okay. Why did you say on Brinwa that, that couldn't, the water in the man-made ponds couldn't be an issue of conservation? I think it could.
Oh, no, because they're temporary ponds, it's not, I mean, that's not an uncommon construction technique.
I, I don't think I can remember a development that I ever saw that, that we've had that happened, of the detention pond itself, the preliminary, but I never remember seeing anybody with that kind of stuff.
Up at Herb Chambers, they created a temporary pond on the large site that they're in construction now.
This isn't a residential neighborhood.
Correct.
With children, no kids.
It shouldn't have standing water, and it should have, it should have some protection around it, but the use of a temporary pond is not, is not a wacky notion. I will say, I think that they are arbitrarily creating ponds that I don't think are designed. I think it's a gentleman with an excavator digging a hole, sticking a pipe in, and creating a berm and saying, "Hey, detention pond."
How are they eventually going to pipe that to get all that water from up there down to the detention pond that's on Brinwa?
It should all, the, the design, as it was originally approved-
Because right now, there's a lot of dirt.
Correct. The seeding, I think, will have a big part of it, reduce the velocity, retain some of it.
And even lots that aren't under construction don't have grass that's going to absorb.
Well, and that's why it made no sense for them to be dumping riprap in between those two lots, because now, and then you see the photos with the piles of sand up above, if we get a rainstorm and it's raining almost every night this week, that's going to all be washed down into the next yard.
Riprap versus grass changes hydrologic conditions.
I think you're probably looking at a negligible change. I think, you know-
Was that question, Adam?
I was just asking if, I mean, when you have grassy soil on the site, it seeps the water, it prevents runoff.
Well, only because the roots would take some of it, but in that case, that's a clay hill. They had a problem in 1968, that's why Camasi Brothers didn't do one.
But it's designed to work when it's done, I appreciate that. I didn't know if removing that in some way changed the hydrology calculations to make it not work.
Theoretically, slow the water down and it will fall down behind it. I mean, it depends also what's behind the riprap. If it's just riprap dumped on soil-
That's what it is.
It's eventually going to run away. If it's, you know, got a geotech fabric and, you know, there's something stabilized in the soil and the riprap is holding the fabric in place, you run into a different sort of thing. You know, I think that there's, there's stabilization mats, there's techniques that can be used.
A few rolls of sod.
You know, honestly, the hill behind 27, I don't know that you can get sod to stay on, but you can-
One between the two lots, it could have.
You could get, yeah, you could get a geomat, and I think that there's, there's alternative ways over there.
There's some work you got to do to make, because that big steep, steep one-
Yes.
That goes down to the house that fronts on Brinwa Ave.
Yeah, that's a challenge.
Comes up, goes over, that was, and like she said when she moved it, she never knew that was going to go in like that, because people look at the plants. And it's seeded now, I'm not sure how well it is, but it's, I, I think it's, I got to look.
All right, you have anything besides?
You have two things to sign.
Oh, joy.
You have your-
Minutes, finally.
You have your registry signatures and 683 South Bridge, and Mr. Jem's mile line. Uh, it's, uh, the registry requires submission of planning board signatures, so they know who's authorized to sign planning board signatures.
Because Adam was scoring on signature.
Only on your checks, Rob.
And my name is spelled S-T-E-I.
Ah, I'll correct it.
I told you.
Oh, I haven't read on everything else. It's too kind of type writer.
It's right on the sheet.
And then sign it. He always do a big, big one for us. He was having a second one.
It was your write-in, the house is over here.
Yep.
I'll do that one.
And news for you? No. There's a million of them coming across the border down in Texas.
Okay, now. 83 South Street, you want to sign that little one?
Yes, you do.
Adam, do we have regulars to sign for Jem too?
Regulars to sign for Jem?
Sign for the mile line?
Oh, no, no, because I can just, I can just scan the mile line.
Already, yeah, I'm sure. How old is she now?
Five weeks. Uh, I think she's short, she's out of here.
That look on her face cracks me up.
Anything else we need?
Minutes.
Minutes, we have minutes from-
Yeah.
Home herd or minutes?
27 May and 10 June.
All right, we have minutes from 27 May.
Doing great.
Any questions, additions, modifications?
Sorry, I get-
I entertain a motion.
I got one, this one, you want to say? No.
I'll make motion to approve minutes of-
Of 27?
Of May 27.
Second?
I want a babysitter.
No, thank you.
I will, she's adorable.
Looking for babysitters.
You want a babysitter?
Yeah, bring her up.
Let me know.
Put her in a shed with the rest of them.
I had lunch with mine, and she's fifty. My granddaughter's twenty-three and a doctor.
So is that a 401?
Okay, so we have a motion to approve, we are second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? That's, we have another set of minutes from June 10th, 2014. Any additions, any corrections?
Just spelling of my last name.
Sorry.
No worries.
Spell her name correctly, please.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of June 10.
Motion is made and seconded for minutes from June 10. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Those are approved also.
I spelled it both ways, so I can't be wrong.
All right, so, anything else to come before the board, any new business? Well, in that case, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we know. Time to go.